We got it. We're ready to go. Okay, welcome to this month's neighborhood board. Let me start by saying that we do have elections tonight. We'll find out who the new chair is going to be, whether it's myself or whoever else. So we're running this, we're going to start the meeting and go like it's all ready to go. Again, I'm going to start by reading this. There's a lot of folks here. We have a lot of people talking tonight. I'm really looking forward to this one. So here we go. If participating virtually, please mute yourself when you're not speaking and use the raise hand feature when you want to answer a question or ask a question. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. That's huge. It'll help out a lot. After recognition, address your comments to the chair, whoever it is tonight. Comments must be related to the pending agenda item. It's not for something later on or whatever. Just to let you know, we have a bunch of agenda items, but we also have a little thing on the back that says, resident and community comments. We do have a bunch of those tonight also. Because the agenda was full with board business, so we, I kind of stretched it out. Okay, getting back to that. By board rules, audience and board members can have the two turns to speak on a topic. Okay, we got to watch that one. We got a little way last week, last month. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to two, two minutes per turn. Those giving reports should limit their reports to three, three minutes or five minute presentations. Okay? Those giving reports should limit their reports to three. Please silence all electronic devices. Okay, I would do mine. Okey doke. This board may take action on any agenda item as required by state sunshine law. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on. You can talk, but we might not be able to do anything about it. So right now, call to order, it's a little bit later than six thirty. I don't know the exact time, but we're in there. Okay, roll call. There you go.
Roll call. Member Alred? Absent. Member Deval?
Here.
Present.
Could you, it's going to be coming on there also.
Yes.
We have to make sure, okay?
Member Caldera?
Here.
Member De Vilbus?
She'll be, she'll be on there by a couple of minutes.
Absent, okay. Member Kachak?
Present.
Member Kim?
Present.
There he is.
And then, present. Member Kohler? Absent. Member Lee? Absent. Member Cadri?
Here.
And member Sal, uh, member Salis? Absent. And member Robati?
Present. You missed Louis Caldera.
Caldera. Uh, member Caldera is present.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we have six. One short of quorum.
Okay. We'll just roll until whoever shows up. Hopefully both Morgan and Chris show up. All right, so we're going to roll as far as we can. Okay, first of all, we're going to be dealing with the Honolulu Fire Department. They sent me, they sent me a email that I sent along because I didn't think I was going to be doing this. Okay, so I'll try to send it out to every, every board member. That's about the best I can do. Again, my hands are tied on some of these things. Okay, next we have the Honolulu Police Department. We're going to go with District One first.
Good evening, Chair Robati, board members and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusa representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Air Responsibility. Thank you guys for your time and patience. I'm going to get right into the stats. I know your guest's agenda is very, very full. So the motor vehicle thefts for August were two, which is down from the previous month of five. Burglaries, fantastic, were zero. Previous month it was three. Thefts were eleven, slightly up from the previous month, eight. U M Vs or car break-ins is two. Previous month was three. Assaults were zero. Previous month was three. There were no sex assaults reported in both months, as well as graffiti cases. And then drug-related offenses were three, and the previous month was zero. So total calls for your particular area. So all of the area that's west of Haoli Street is four hundred and twenty-two compared to the previous month of three hundred and eighty. So I also checked for the robberies in the area and found that there had been three. Two of those robberies reported resulted in officers locating and arresting the perpetrator. The other was a handgun robbery in the area of Don Quixote. The suspect for that is still being sought. However, video surveillance was recovered, so hopefully an identification can be made and as well as an arrest. With regards to the other crime classifications, there are no criminal breaches for the area at this particular time. I just wanted to report the upcoming events for your area are the Aloha Parade Festival that will be happening on September twenty-eighth. A parade will be getting set up that morning at six a.m. and starts at Alomana Beach Park, going towards Kapilani Park in Waikiki. Please expect road and lane closures in the surrounding areas and leave early if you need to get somewhere that day. Chief Logan also wanted me to mention our badges and buckets events, which is a spinoff for our cop on top. We'll be, we will personally be, there should be, we'll be at the Keamoko Walmart on scaffolds accepting donations for the Hawaii Special Olympics. We will be there from September sixth, seventh, and the eighth, so this upcoming weekend. I'm actually going to be there on Saturday from eight to twelve, so please come and donate for this great cause. I'll end up with the safety tip of the month for September. Regarding securing loads, we at HPD are responding to a lot of calls for debris on the roadways and freeways. It's due to not securing our belongings effectively. We found all kinds of things on the freeway, especially coolers, cooler lids, plastic chairs, playpens, surfboards, and even Christmas trees. These items become an extreme hazard to motorists, especially motorcyclists. We're asking our community members to take the time and be patient to secure loose items in your bed of your truck and secure it well to the roof racks. Motor vehicle fatality count are at twenty-eight for this year compared to thirty-eight last year about the same time. At this time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and ask any, answer any questions from the board members and the public attendees in regards to all locations west of Haoli Street.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Questions, questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know about this incident. There was a two-car crash here. I don't know if intentionally or something on the Bingham Street. Bingham and the Alexander Corner. Four cars crashed each other. Someone hit on September thirty, September third night. Do you have that report there? What happened over there?
Actually, Mr. Cadri, I'm going to leave that for the District Seven Lieutenant or representative to answer. It's out of our area. So that Bingham and Eisenberg area, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? No?
Awesome. Good evening, Officer. This is Morgan Lee. I am just wondering, could you share a little bit about what the history of having red light cameras in our, in your district is? I'm just curious about that. I see, feel like I see cars skirting the edges of yellow lights many times when I'm biking around and I don't know what we've done in the past regarding red light cameras and so forth.
If I'm not mistaken, don't take this as total fact, but I think the first red light camera was at the intersection of Vineyard and Palama. I think it was the Vineyard Corridor that started off the red light camera situation, and then it progressed slowly into town. I think the next locations were Ward and King, Ward and Kapilani. And obviously, that tragedy that occurred with Sarayara had gotten that one camera at Kapilani Boulevard and Kamakei installed. So these red light cameras are being installed in more and more places. I just realized that it's a, it's a mainland vendor that monitors the, monitors and records the incidents. They review it. If they feel that it is a red light run, what they will do is they will now forward it to our traffic division and a particular officer reviews those footages to actually physically watch it and say that, yes, that is a red light run. Now, there's been instances where people say, oh, you know, I didn't run the red light and it was in the yellow. So it is true. If they do enter the intersection on a yellow light, then it's not considered a red if, if they're coming out of it and then it turns red. It has to be red before it's considered a red light run. So it'll, it'll take a photo of the vehicle's license plate, either the front or back, and then the distance of it, as the light turns red, the distance of the vehicle to the stop line. So that, that's, that's the way that we're going to be testifying in court. And then the citation is issued and the citation is issued to the, the registered owner of the vehicle, just as if it was like a parking ticket. Yeah. I hope that answers your question.
So when I think of red light cameras, but I think I have an outdated version, you see like that flash happen? Or is there a flash that still happens, or it's just kind of like rolling footage that then someone reviews later?
That, that is kind of confusing to me too, because I, I kind of, I'm kind of interested in regards to how this system works. But so the red light cameras, even during the day, you would see the cameras flashing and then at, at sometimes you see a guy run the red light and it's not flashing. So I don't really know. I'm not too really versed in the technology of it. But in regard, when I spoke to the officer that, that does the red light cameras, the footage is very definitive and very good. It's clear.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody? President? But, okay, there you go. Nobody else? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, next we have District Seven.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven. The following is the statistics for the month of August, two thousand twenty-four. Motor vehicle theft, there were twelve. Burglary, three. Theft, sixteen. U E M V car break-ins were also sixteen. Total calls for service was six thousand five hundred and fifty-three. Our safety tip for the month is flash flood preparedness. With regarding to flash floods, there are three things you should be aware of when they're giving out the warnings and the notifications. There's a watch, a warning, and an advisory. Of the three, the advisory is of course the most serious. It's letting you know that a flash flood is imminent. So what you need to know with regards to flash floods, know the best routes to high ground. Also, if you will be affected by any flash flood, so if you live in an area prone to flooding. Also, if, if you are near the water, again, be prepared to evacuate with whatever necessary items you might need, for example, medication or any important documents or paperwork in case your residents may become flooded as well. And then lastly, and most importantly, is do not attempt to drive or cross through any flood or any flooded area because you can easily be again washed downstream or get caught up in that flood. But that's the, the report for the month. Thank you. I'll address the one question about the accident on Bingham. So unfortunately, I don't have any details of that. I wasn't even aware that there was, and I'm just coming back from my days off. But if you'd like further information on that, I can try and find that, some of the details for you and get back to you. Thank you.
Okay, questions? I do have one question for you.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe it's because I'm getting older, but mopeds tend to be a whole lot louder these days. Is there, I thought we, there was a, a law put up where they had to be inspected, so they couldn't do that?
Yes, they should be and they shouldn't have any type of alterations to the moped. So if we see anything onsite or on view, we can address that as well as any other violations with regards again to the moped.
Do they get inspected once a year, or, or it's just they drive until you guys hear that it's really very loud?
Yeah, usually we're just here. I'm not sure if there's an inspection process. I know that they need to be permitted. I'm not sure how often that needs to be updated on the moped permits.
And second question. The bicycles that are electric that go down the middle of the street, do they have to have license plates, or?
So again, that's a, that is a gray area, and I believe, I think I just saw a news report saying that the, our lawmakers, the legislators are trying to address it and to clear that up. As of right now, we are taking enforcement and action if it is no pedals. So if there's no pedals, we're treating it more as if, as like a moped or a motorcycle. And with pedals, of course, then it'd be more along the lines of a bicycle. Yes, yes.
Okay. That was my quick one. Anybody else on the board? Have one more?
Um, can you remind me, do you, are you guys part of the district that includes Waikiki or not?
We have some parts of Waikiki, you know, that Diamond Head.
Okay.
Right at the, the Diamond Head Waikiki area, depending which specifically area you're talking about. And then, of course, also on the other side, on the, so you have on the Montserrat side, and you also have the Diamond Head roadside.
So I read an article in Time Magazine a couple of weeks ago about the changing weapon policy, or if you're allowed to kind of like have weapons in public, and the Time Magazine article had article, mentioned people who are walking around with battle knives, axes, guns. Can you clarify what people are allowed to use and where they're allowed to show them off?
So it can be anywhere, well, let me just go, go back. So if a person is carrying, there's a concealed carry law for firearms. Though we don't currently have an open carry. Open carry would mean you can just carry a firearm out in the open. However, that would be dependent, again, of course, on the type of weapon that you're talking about. So for example, if you saw an article about battle axes and machetes or large knives or swords, they can actually carry that around in public. Of course, they are not. It would be against the law to, of course, threaten or to use it in a dangerous or threatening manner. So if that is occurring, then of course you can call for police assistance.
What exactly changed in the law that dictated, or that now allows people to walk around with these?
Yeah, that, that was all tied up with, with the, with the concealed carry laws and the way that the, the courts interpreted those laws. So those laws kind of all came about, you know, little by little, but generally speaking, in this, in this last, I would say, year or two.
Okay, anybody else on the board with a question? No?
Yes.
Bicycle friend, is there a speed limit in bike lanes? Because there's, you know, the regular bicycle, the, 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 just electric ones, they're really bad.
Generally speaking, in the bicycle lanes, because up until this point, the technology with, you know, with the electric bicycles and of course with the manually operated bicycles, you couldn't go very fast. So we're looking at new technology and we're seeing the bicycles go faster. So right now, there isn't a speed limit per se for a bike lane. There's just a speed limit. And so that's what we'll be using. Correct.
Okay, I do have another question, but first I have to say something. If you're going to ask a question, unfortunately, you're going to have to use the microphone up in the front. Okay, or come over and get this one. Okay, deal? Go ahead.
Along the same lines about the e-bikes, are popping wheelies against the law? You know, when they pop wheelies?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So they can operate their, and it could be a bicycle, a moped, a motorcycle. They can operate in a reckless manner.
And that's considered reckless.
Correct. Good evening, Lieutenant? Lieutenant Nishimura? Yes. Okay, I got it right. Okay, so um, I spoke with Major Ogata on August twenty-third, and we had a nice long conversation about things happening in the, in the, in our vicinity, you know, over at by Date Street, Eisenberg, and Coolidge, and I live on Coolidge. And so we had a, I had a discussion with him about the rash break-ins near Stadium Park. So I know, I know you mentioned you had twelve this month? Yes. In comparison to last month, so we have a rise. So over in, I, on Eisenberg, fronting Stadium Park, there's, there's been a number of break-ins throughout the, the last few months that I've, because I, I crossed through that area all the time. My aunt lives on the other side of the park behind the library, so I'd cross through the park all the time to go visit her on a weekly basis. So on the day that I spoke to Major Ogata on the twenty-third, right after I got done with my conversation, I jumped out of my apartment, walked down, and there was this lady on the side of the road. Her van got broken into. She had a, she had a baby seat in the back. She just went through a whole bunch of issues with her car. She just got it repaired and her car window was smashed. And I, I said I would bring it up in the meeting and, and discuss to see what we can do about that area because it's a really bad brake smash and grab area. The month before, last month I came in, I also brought up one about a Mercedes Benz that I found broken, broken into. And they did more than just break into it. They actually ransacked that entire vehicle. They trashed it completely on the inside. They broke stuff in there, you know, I mean. So anyway, I was just wondering if you guys might be considering doing a sting operation there, putting a bait car there that might be up in, up in the air for that. And um, I noticed that on Date Street, we had two more accidents somewhere. Well, one was down, my neighbors told me there was one on near Pa'ani and Kapilani area. And my, my issue last month and the month before was about the speeding going on on Date Street. And I've been bringing up every meeting, you know, they said they would, they would, they would send a couple of officers, but the other month they, they did. So again, what can we do about that issue again? I want to bring that up on Date Street because in our area, we have a lot of speeding going on all times of the night. They, they did ask me a couple of months ago, what, what was the most popular time, and it seems to be in the evening, like right around this time till late at night. And also, I want to say much for all you guys' hard work. I know you guys are on your plate, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Yeah, thank you. And with regards to the break-ins, that's vehicle break-ins right here, on the street. So we can do two things. One, we can have our regular patrol officers make more checks. So what I'll do is I'll pass on this information and I'll look into what times and specific areas are being affected the most. So we can do that and we can try and increase some of our patrols both day and nighttime. The other thing we can do is we have officers that conduct special projects around our district addressing various issues, and this could be one of them. For example, yeah, break-ins at a certain area, but it could also be, you know, other things as well, speeding and those kind of things as well. So I'll pass it on and see if we can get some projects going and then as well as increase some of our officers to address that issue. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for officers? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We're going to go back on our, our agenda here because the Fire Department just showed up, brought us their truck that we can all go ride, go riding with them. Yeah.
Aloha, sorry for the delay. We had some incidents that we needed to attend to. Before we begin, we'll be raffling off tickets for the rides around the block. Nah. So I have with me firefighter Sean Ingo, who's going to be giving you the report for the month of August.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the month of August, incident statistics for August two thousand twenty-four. For fires, there were two structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, seven nuisance fires. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, one cooking fire, and six activated alarms with no fire. Emergencies, there were one hundred and twenty-nine medical calls. Motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, zero. Motor vehicle crash collision, ten. Mountain rescues, zero. Ocean rescues, zero. And two hazardous material incidents. For the fire safety tip of the month, move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more of a, more than a public courtesy. It's the law. Hawaii requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency. Investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall, one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph two. And two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, to two lanes over, which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Note, emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. Should you have any questions, please email to hfdsspublicaffairsandmedia liaison at hfdnehp@honolulu.gov. Are there any questions at this time?
Anybody on board? Nobody? Nobody? Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys.
Where do we pick up those tickets?
Four more lines.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next. Next one is, is election of the officers, as you saw this. So we're going to have to try to do this. We're going to have to, we're going to do the roll call and we do for a
We, we have quorum now.
Okay. I don't think, no. No. Can't do that, fortunately. Okay. So we go with the chair first? Okay, why don't we do a roll call and ask? Or who wants to?
Spreading nomination.
Yeah. I nominate myself. Thank you.
I'm going to nominate myself too.
Do you have anybody else that wants to be chair online? Going once, twice, three times. No answer on that one. Okay.
Robati for Lee.
So member, board members, please state, Robati or Lee. Please indicate last name of the person you would like to vote for chair.
May I ask one question first? Last week, or last month, we had elections and it was indicated that you need seven votes to win, not a majority. Is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to clarify, it's not of those present, it's of the entire board seats. So you guys are a thirteen-member board. Seven is your magic number. You need seven to take action. And that's why we need seven here present tonight to even consider action. So theoretically, everyone would have to vote the exact same for this to work based on what the numbers we have tonight. All right, so you can start by calling last names.
All right, member Alred? Absent. Member Deval?
Robati.
Robati. Member De Vilbus? Absent. Member Caldera?
Robati.
Robati. Member Kachak? Lee. Member Kim?
Uh, Lee.
Lee. Member Kohler? Absent. Member Lee?
Lee.
Member Cadri?
Lee.
Lee. Member Salis? Absent. And member Robati? Robati. It's three votes for Robati, four for Lee. No, no, no candidate has attained majority of the board.
We could do the vote one more time.
I don't feel okay.
Yeah, I didn't think so. So we can
Okay.
We can move on to the secretary position?
Secretary, yes.
Excuse me, would you sec? Let's do secretary and see if we got anybody in. We'll go from there. I don't, yeah. Any nominations for secretary? Anybody wants to be secretary? Anybody wants to be secretary? Don't look at me, I'm.
And, and in the.
On to treasurer.
Yes.
Okay, moving along, treasurer, anybody?
Yeah, I'm interested in a che-, in a treasurer.
Could we clarify what the treasurer does on the board?
At the moment, it's still in the plan, um, as an officer position. So in the event that all the other officers are not present, they would be the last remaining officer and they would run the meeting and handle the position of the chair. Uh, there used to be a treasurer's report, there no longer is, um, it was very. Minor details about postage and mailouts, we will always handle that for the board to make sure everyone's informed of these meetings. So it's not necessary to send out, um, so at the moment, no real duties besides filling in as an officer.
Now, question, does he need seven to? Oh, because how many we have for Chris, no, no, for Chris Salas? Last month. Do we have seven?
We have some, seven members present.
If there's hearing on another, then we'll do a roll call.
We'll do a roll call for, um, Quadri, um, member Quadri for, um, treasurer. Um, please state, um, last name Quadri if you would like to vote for member Quadri for treasurer, uh, starting with member Alred. Absent. Member Deval. Quadri. Uh, member Devilbas. Absent. Uh, member Caldera.
Quadri.
Quadri. Member Kachuk. Quadri. Member Kim.
Quadri.
Quadri. Member Kohler. Absent. Member Lee.
Quadri.
Quadri. Uh, member Quadri.
Quadri.
Quadri. Member Salis. Absent. Member Robati.
Quadri.
Quadri. On a vote of seven, uh, seven votes in favor of Quadri, Quadri is now the board sec-, uh, board treasurer.
Alrighty, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, the chair, or chair pro tem, Robati.
Sorry, so if I'm not mistaken, um, the only officer positions this board has elected is the vice chair and now the treasurer. Since the vice chair is not present at this meeting, uh, the treasurer would now run the rest of this meeting.
Member Quadri, are you okay with running the rest of this meeting or would it be more efficient?
Uh, uh, yeah, I can run, I, I have an agenda, so.
Perfect. So, uh, yeah, now we're on to the next item, determination of recess schedule, and we can help you out if you need any help. But I would recommend just follow the agenda and ask for any questions and comments from the public and the board as we move forward.
So, right now, we are on the number, uh, which agenda item right now we're on?
We're now on three B, determination of recess schedule.
Okay, 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 now, so the, uh. We have to determine the, uh, recess schedule up to three per year. I believe we have one in July, one on Christmas and New Year. I think we have three.
Okay, so the only rule is you can't do two consecutive?
Okay.
Yeah, most boards do the Christmas time, yeah, if you want to do spring break or something, that's also, but I'm gonna leave it up to the board. We just need a motion, so you could ask, is there a motion from the board to recess in X, Y, and Z?
Yeah, is there any motion, uh, for the recess schedule?
Um, I motioned to take a recess on January second, twenty twenty-five. It is right after New Year's.
So are we taking only a motion for one recess or all three together?
You could bundle them, um, I would suggest just two at the moment because this board did recess in July, which counts as this board's term. We shouldn't be speaking for the next term, um, which would start July twenty twenty-five. So if the board did want to throw in one more, that would be acceptable at this time if the maker of the motion would allow.
Okay, so we have a motion for January second recess. Is there any motion for second recess?
A second.
Uh, second motion or second for this, uh, motion?
I second for January second, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so now we have a motion here, so, uh. So can we take a roll call or just say I or, uh, or we can take a vote?
For this one chair to make it smooth, you could ask if there's any objections and if there's no objections, then it passes unanimously.
Is there any object, objection or discussion? Okay. See none, so, uh, we can, uh, like I have seen, there is no objection, so we can adopt, uh, this motion?
Yes.
To have a recess on January second.
Better second twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, January second, twenty twenty-five, board recess. Okay, so now. Moving to the next agenda item. Filling of the two vacant board at large seats. Residents, uh, interested in filling a vacant board seat must bring, uh, current approval of, is there any? Um, residents' interest in these two, uh, area?
Chair, we did have, uh, one in person that already did volunteer and I see another hand raised, could you come over here? Yeah, we just got to verify residency before we move forward.
Okay.
Perfect. Uh, basically, we're gonna have the two of you proudly introduce yourselves.
Yeah.
All right, chair, so we do have two in-person volunteers, they've both been verified to fit within the district. Uh, at this point, the board would usually ask each volunteer to give a brief introduction of themselves.
Okay.
So we can, I guess, start with, um, Ed and Dina.
Hi, my name is Ed Endira, I've lived in this district for thirteen years. I work in nonprofit healthcare, Koko Kalihii Valley, maybe some of you have heard of it. I have a doctorate in community psychology from UH Manoa, and so that means that I studied. The science of understanding how to make community a better place, so how do you think about what that looks like? How do you understand what that looks like and how do you make an intervention? Uh, I'll stop there.
Yeah. Thank you. Edward? Could you come up to the mic? Our second volunteer.
That was very brief. My name is Edward Hulse. And I am a guest of the Hawaiian Islands since nineteen seventy-six, I stress that I am a guest. I'm not born and raised, however, my son Sage Hulse, born on the North Shore, Kahua Hospital, uh, I see him Hawaiian. Uh, he represents a bite around the world, he's a pro surfer. Um, I got here to, uh, thinking I could be a pro surfer, that never happened. Met a woman, fell in love, got married, had, had the boy, he's out of the nest, he's on his own. And, uh, I've been in this neighborhood and Manoa for many years, never really taken an active part. Doing a community service and I finally felt it's necessary. Especially living on a very complicated street called Young Street. And I have a couple of issues with, uh, noisy traffic, including. Uh, EMTs and, and, uh, fire engines. When there is four-lane tra-, uh, roads on King Street and Baritania. That's an issue I brought it up with a, a dear friend for many years, I'm not a name dropper, but Rick Blanchardi is a dear friend. His kids and my boy grew up together in Kahala, neighbors, I have lunch with Rick whenever he can get away. We go to discreet, out-of-the-way restaurants, he doesn't want any publicity. He is running again, he wants to do this again, I don't know why, he's losing his hair. But he's staying fit, I'm keeping him sh- in shape, I'm a personal trainer, I also teach Chinese martial arts. Traveled in throughout China and studied at the iconic Shaolin Temple. Both the, the language Buddhism and, uh, Shaolin, uh, Kung Fu and, uh, Chi Kung. And that's what I teach now, finished a gig at the Kahala Hotel. They flew me over to Maui, the Grand Waileas, I've had some really great gigs, I also teach at Kapilani Park. Small groups and just, you know, for, uh, gratuity if they want. Um, other than that. Degrees, uh, UC Santa Barbara, an English major and, uh, uh, World Literature minor. And today I am a, a writer, my first novel is coming out. And, uh, I, I really have fun doing, uh, my writing. I do want to get involved and I would like to sit on the board and, and initiate some things, including the noise factor. Engines, there's almost a million cars on this island, trucks. And the noise of them, uh, without the excess manifolds being, uh, properly tended to. The mopeds, both two-stroke and four-stroke. Some of them are like mosquitoes, others of them are, are a roar. We've got to control that, I wish the HPD guy was still here, but we, we can talk about that at some other time. So the noise thing, I've got damaged eardrums from big wave surfing, held underwater and so I've got damaged ears, so I'm very sensitive to noise. And, uh, this noise from engines that are not muffled properly. And, and then the mopeds, there's got to be some governing of the mopeds. Uh, the second cop, kind of, he didn't blow it off, but I know, he said something. Was, it was nondescript, anyway, uh, I would like to sit on this board, this very respected, uh, board and, uh. That's all I have to say, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have to, uh, take a roll call vote or? Uh, need to nominate, someone have to nominate them, right?
Yeah, chair, so the procedure would be for a board member, a board member must nominate somebody, we don't need a second. We just need one board member to say, I nominate, for example, Ed and Dina or Edward to fill the vacancy. And then, once we go through all the options, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Can we nominate them at the same time or is the voting and nomination separately?
Uh, so there are two seats available and there's, we could take them separately, there's three? Did someone say, yeah, there's two vacancies, two people in person. Um, but chair, I would just ask, uh, you would ask from the board, is there any nominations? That's it. Yeah, sorry, I'm talking online. Sorry, um, treasurer Quadri, you are the chair I'm speaking of.
No, no, that's fine, you can speak, I allowed you.
No, 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 um, you should ask the board, are there any nominations?
Yeah, uh, is there any nomination?
One of their volunteers, we need board members to nominate them.
Yes, yes, that's I'm asking, uh, so one, uh, can someone nominate, uh, uh, you do, you know, both of them or one, one, by, one by one?
Okay, I nominate Ed Endira.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, are there any other nominations at this time?
I'd like to nominate Edward.
Okay, so now we have a nominations. So now, we can take a, uh, a roll call vote, right?
Yes, we'll take a roll call vote and we'll do them individually, the first nomination we heard was for Ed and Dina. So we're gonna do a roll call vote, when we call your name, please state the name of the person you're voting for. This isn't like a contested race, this is for one seat. So we're, the only option is just to say Ed and Dina or abstain. And then after that, we'll go to, uh, Edward's vote.
And how many votes do you have to get to be on?
Seven votes is required and I believe we have seven members, so if one doesn't vote, you get where I'm going with this. All right, um, you don't have to say members, just call it abstain.
Alred. Absent. Deval.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. Uh, Devilbas. Absent. Caldera.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. Kachuk.
Dina.
Ed Endira. Kim.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. Um, Kohler. Absent. Lee.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. Quadri.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. And Salas. Absent. Robati.
Ed Endira.
Ed Endira. Uh, seven votes for Ed Endira. Congratulations. Now we're going to do, uh, Edward Hulse. Um. Alred. And you can say Hulse, um, for member. Absent. Deval. Caldera. Caldera? Back to member Gold. Uh, c-, member Kachuk.
Hulse.
Hulse. Kim. Hulse. Kohler, absent. Lee.
Hulse.
Hulse. Quadri.
Hulse.
Hulse. Salas, absent. Robati.
Hulse.
Hulse. Uh, member Caldera.
Hulse, sorry.
Thank you, on a vote of seven, uh, in favor of Hulse, uh, congratulations, you're now a member of the board.
Uh, member or treasurer, chair pro tem, Quadri. Um, we need to swear these two members in so that they can be voting members, um, if you want to call a brief recess, it'll only take about a minute or two.
Okay, now we have a brief recess, uh, to take their oath and then we reconvene.
Thank you.
So. Allowed to vote, so you can call this meeting back to order.
Okay, I call the meeting back to order. And now, we are going to the, um, agenda item D, resolution urging the legislature to adopt a good government reform. Uh, Kim? Member Kim, I think they introduce.
Hi, everyone, uh, my name is Wookiee Kim, I'm a member of this neighborhood board and. Um, I'm proposing this resolution in my personal capacity and the rationale is quite simple. We need good government reform to restore the public's trust. In the way that our government and specifically the way that our legislature operates. Um, this has become all the more important in light of a string of recent high-profile scandals. Involving elected officials violating the public trust. And this builds on the work that was already started by the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct. Which issued a, uh, report, a comprehensive report in December of twenty twenty-two. And which made several recommendations that this resolution now proposes. So what does this resolution do? Um, in short, it asks the legislature to make the following five changes to their rules. First, make committee testimony publicly available immediately. Which would obviously increase transparency and allow better public participation. Uh, second, it requires community members, or sorry, committee members to vote on all bills referred to committees. Um, third, it prevents bills that have no fiscal impact from being referred to the finance committees. Because as we all know, that gives the, uh, well, it, that would avoid the outsized influence of the finance committees and avoid bottlenecking. Uh, fourth, guaranteeing hearings for bills that are co-introduced by a majority of legislators. So that, you know, it incentivizes greater participation from legislators and, um. The power isn't held by a few select legislators. Fifth, making sure that bill amendments are in writing before being voted on, this is just about increasing transparency and. This is just about increasing transparency and improving deliberation. And then in addition, the resolution asks to make three changes that support fairer elections. First, by prohibiting campaign contributions from conflicted parties. We all know that there have been a lot of incidents and scandals involving contributions from people with conflicts of interest. Second, creating a public financing option for candidates to level the playing field and increase grassroots participation. And third, prohibiting the laundering of campaign contributions through other candidate campaigns. And then the final thing that the resolution asks for is to have the legislature consider letting the people vote on whether to impose term limits on how long a state legislator can stay in office. And of course, this is all also to promote fairness and equal opportunity and encourage grassroots participation and ultimately to strengthen our democracy. So these are just a few ideas. It's a start. But I hope that in focusing on increasing transparency, accountability, and efficiency in our legislative process, that overall, the lawmaking process becomes more democratic and better overall. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kim. Did you share this resolution to the members?
Oh, I, I believe I emailed it to Chair Robati, but I don't know that I emailed it further. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I didn't see that. So that's why I'm asking, so.
Oh, shoot, my bad. What's the appropriate procedure here then?
I think appropriate procedure, you know, in advance, if members review the resolution and if they have any question or comments. But without reading that resolution, if the members are okay and if they have any question.
I think I'm also fine since the text hasn't been circulated. I'm also fine, you know, deferring this to the next meeting. And I'll make sure that this is circulated to everyone.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Quadri?
Yes.
Or Chair Pro Tem, yeah. So let's use this as a learning lesson for everybody. The board does have a Google Drive and let's use that as the library system for all documents. So board members, we can make you all editors where you can upload your own documents. But yeah, if you pass them on to at least your neighborhood assistant, who is Curtis Hayashi with me tonight, we'll get those things uploaded. I would say minimum forty-eight hours before the meeting so that everyone has time to review and provide testimony at the meeting. And like you said, Member Kim, if people don't feel ready to vote on it now because they haven't seen it, we could just put this on at the next meeting and have additional time to review. But I'm not going to jump in the way of emotion. Before we get into it, I don't know that we do want to have full-on discussion, but we will allow for any public testimony at this time. Chair Robati, we do have a resident in person who'd like to speak.
Wookiee?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Please clarify what.
Just one time.
Or you can. Yes, I just have one question, definitional clarification. Conflicted parties or whatever it was you said, so that people know it's probably people that are wanting to get some kind of business or offer the legislature or something. You need to clarify what that terminology is. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. I missed, I thought that everyone had access to the proposed resolution. So I was just summarizing, but the text itself refers to state contractors, grantees, leases, owners, board members, staff consultants, and persons, immediate family members. But again, you know, I think in light of my mess up, I don't think it's really worth spending more time today talking about this. And I'm happy to bring this up at the next meeting and make sure that everyone has a copy of the resolution before.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item because it's already 7:30. So the McCully Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Lau and Paul Toma.
Hello, hi, everyone. My name's Ollie Lau. I'm a planner with SSFM International with a consultant for the Board of Water Supply. And we are conducting a project, or the Board of Water Supply is conducting a project on the sixteen-inch water main on the McCully Street Bridge. And that is what I'm here to tell you about today. Next slide, please. So we're here to provide an overview of the project, talk about why the project's happening, what the benefits of the projects are, what the potential impacts are. And so the client is the Board of Water Supply. And the project manager on the Board of Water Supply side is Michael Yee, who is here tonight, green shirt. And then SSFM International is an engineering firm. We are the consultants on the project. So we're doing the engineering design and also the permitting. So the project manager is Paul Toma, my colleague. I'm Ollie. I'm a planner. I'm doing the environmental permitting and outreach. Next slide, please. Sorry, this is quite small for the folks in the room, but I'm sure you're all familiar with the McCully Street Bridge that crosses the Olawai Canal.
Can you zoom in on the graphic, please?
The, the specific area of the bridge is not the vehicular travel ways. It's the border water supply pipe structure, which is on the Diamond Head side of the bridge, which you may have noticed when walking, but you're probably not looking at it when you're driving. And I believe this will be uploaded to your Google Drive.
Yeah. Can you turn off the light over there?
Next slide, please. Okay, so why is this project being conducted? The sixteen-inch water main is, has metal supports that hold it up, and those are corroded due to this saltwater nature of the Olawai Canal. And if no action is taken, then the water main will fail. So the project is proposed to rehabilitate the, not the pipe itself, but the supports that hold the pipe. Construction will also be working on the concrete because there's spalling and cracking in the concrete that is adjacent to the pipe. Next slide, please. So the current proposed design is a retrofit design which changes the, changes the way the pipe is supported. The new design will have thirteen three-inch hollow steel beams anchored to the sidewalk like this. And then metal rods will come down from the horizontal steel beam to hold, to support the pipe. And this increases the support over the current design. It's also cheaper to construct. It reduces the cost of materials and it should be easier to maintain. Construction, as I mentioned, will also fix the concrete spalling and cracking on the border water supply-owned areas of the bridge. Next slide. Impacts to you, the residents. There'll be no impact on the water supply. The water main will continue to be in use during construction, but there'll be no impact to the water supply that you receive or the water quality. There should be minimal impacts with this design to vehicular traffic. At the moment, we don't think that we'll have to close any lanes during construction because work will be confined to the pipe, the walkway on the side of, above the pipes and potentially part of the sidewalk. There may be sidewalk and bike lane impacts during construction hours. And if so, safe diversions will be provided for bicyclists and pedestrians. The biggest impact could be to water users. So to protect people using the canal and also the construction workers doing the work on the bridge. Parts of the waterway below the bridge may be closed at times during construction. And that will be communicated well in advance by the contractor who can, who does the construction to make sure folks are aware of that. Next slide, please. So construction is anticipated to start in November 2025. And so we're about a year out. It's estimated to last eight months. This could change depending on unforeseen delays with construction or changes to the design scope. But that's our best estimate at this time. During construction, all best management practices will be followed by the contractors. So pollution prevention, no discharging of fill into the Olawai Canal, correct storage and disposal of waste on site, et cetera. And then finally, this is just a graphic representation of the schedule. So the project started in February of this year. This year spent doing design and environmental permitting and outreach, such as talking to you folks here. Then pre-construction, which is bidding, making sure that going through the city's contracting process will begin in July 2025. And construction, as I mentioned, will begin in November 2025. And with that, thank you for taking the time to listen to us and we'll take any questions.
Any question from the board?
Ollie, I've been in Hawaii long enough to know that Hawaii time is usually longer than mainland time, vis a vis. And I saw eight, in about a year, not in about, a year and two more months, fourteen months, you're going to start the construction. However, the pictures to the lay eye that showed, the corrosion has done, done damage. Is it last for another year and two months before the whole thing blows up?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
That corroded pipe will last another year and two months?
I believe so. Otherwise, the work would be done tomorrow.
Are you going to put Band-Aids on it? What are you going to do?
I will leave that question up to the Border Water Supply.
You're going to back on that question. Thank you, Ollie. All right. Good work.
I have the same questions around timeline. First of all, I'm wondering where we are with the permitting process and if you guys have secured all the permits that you need to. And then I'm also wondering if there's anything that can be done to both move up the start time and finish it in less than eight months because two-thirds of a year seems lengthy for this type of thing on McCully.
And so permitting, environmental permitting is in progress. There are not many. So this is, this project's using state funds, so we don't have to do the song and dance with federal funding. So environmental permitting is almost complete. Permitting for actual work permits will be completed once the design is finalized. And in terms of moving it up, I'll leave that question to the Board of Water Supply. But eight months is our estimate and my guess is that we would, it would hopefully be finished faster.
Good evening. Mike Tomyan from Border Water Supply. The construction timeline is more set because of funding. We don't have funding in our current fiscal year, but we're proposing funding in our next fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts, our next fiscal year would start July of 2025.
Thank you. Any other question from the board?
Okay. So basically, until you get those funded, that's when you're going to find out whether or not you're going to continue with the work? Say what it is.
We, well, we know it's an issue. So I'm pretty certain we will have funding for our next fiscal year.
My name's Kathleen Pachinui. I'm the Communications Officer for the Board of Water Supply. A lot of our funding, we do projects every year and we prioritize them as to what's going on and what's happening. I can tell you right now, if it looked like it was going to fall into the Olawai Canal, we would have dealt with it already. So I can assure you that we feel that it's going to last, the braces will last at least until they start this project. As you know, we've been dealing with a little thing called Red Hill and that kind of reprioritized unfortunately a lot of our funding. But we're back on track and I will take this back. Mike will take it back to his head. I'll take it back. I work actually directly for Ernest Lau and make sure that he hears your concerns and that we make sure that this gets funding for next year.
Let's say some dream scenario happened. You got all the money that you needed to do the project. What's the shortest amount of time that you could finish the project?
Well, like everything, we have to get materials and materials do take time as we live in a whole island. Everything almost has to be brought in. So that has been unfortunately for most of our construction projects, has been a real delaying factor ever since COVID. Not making an excuse, it's a fact of life. It takes a long time for us to get pipes and things like that. So we will do everything we can to expedite this, knowing that the concern is here for the community. But permits also take a long time. We do not get special dispensation because we're a city agency, unfortunately. We stand in line like everybody else. The good news is, as Mike said, these are not federal funds, so we're not, we don't have to do any NEPA or what we call 106 or 60s. Those are things from the state historic preservation having to do with cultural issues. So we are exempt from that because we're not using federal funds.
Sorry, one more question about process. So they had the timeline out, but what needs to happen for what to happen? So like when it comes to permitting, money approval and ordering supplies and then getting supplies, which of those things rely on those other things?
They all rely on each other. It's, the permits are going through the process, the design has to get done. The funding will happen next year. Once the funding's done, because it's state funding, do we have that state funding? City funding? Oh, it's board funding. Since it's our money, well, it's essentially your money. It's your money. We don't have to wait for anybody to tell us we can do it. So that is already going to be in place.
Do you have to go through a procurement process to buy stuff?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So we will start. I know it's a nightmare and people always wonder why these things take so long. But the procurement process is there for the protection of the public. But we will take the message back that you want this expedited. I will make sure that Mr. Lau hears it as well as Mike's boss. Thank you.
Member Quadri, we do have in-person questions if we'll allow.
Okay, yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, is it on now? Okay, yes. We've been, so think in a bigger picture. We have been saying for years and years, fix the McCully Bridge because it's so inadequate in terms of pedestrians and bicycle safety. Now, for years, as I've walked across the McCully Bridge, that graded area where you have the pipe running under and that water all goes to Waikiki, in Lake Shishu, if you didn't know. It's such an easy thing just to put a very good, well-designed railing up on it and run the bicycle and pedestrian right across it. It doesn't really need structural improvement or anything else to get that going across. Couldn't you partner with DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, and Complete Streets and make that happen? Make us feel much better about the safety for everybody else that's going across the bridge. Thank you. I see Michael O'Keefe, your representative from B&amp;V. So Michael, I'm asking you to take that back to John and Roger and we will see what we can do. Unfortunately, thanks Laura, that's a great suggestion. It's out of our control, but we will definitely advocate for that. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have to move to next agenda item now.
Can we do two more questions in person? We'll make them brief.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, one quick question, two actually. So the first one I want to know is, is there going to be any impact on traffic? Okay, was there going to be lane closures?
So right now, assumption is no. We think that with the current design, there won't be lane closures. There will just be, there may be impacts to the sidewalk. So the proposed design has no traffic impacts?
So dovetailing on that, you said there is going to be impacts on the sidewalk. So does that mean that the pedestrians and bike riders will have to cross McCully in order to use the pathway on that side?
So right now, there's no specifics, we can't give, right now, we can't give specifics on what the pedestrian and bicycle impacts would be in terms of what the plan would be. As a bicyclist myself, my goal would be to keep bicycles on that side, not have to cross over, same with pedestrians. But there's, I mean, there is always a chance that that would be the outcome. The goal would be for that to not happen and also the impacts would be during construction hours only. So then, you know, it would open at least in the evenings and in the morning.
The other thing we'll make sure that we do for you, since this is so far out, I'll keep this in my follow-up file. And as we get closer, we are happy to come back to this board and give you an update and update the timeline and everything. We post all of our projects on our website under construction and you'll be able to get regular updates. We update those pages regularly and we'll make sure that this board gets all the information they need and we can show you what the traffic mitigation is. And by traffic, I don't necessarily mean cars. I mean for bicycles and pedestrians as well. Thank you.
That's such a narrow sidewalk to begin with already. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think now we have to moving on to the next agenda item, which is the Kapahulo Moylili Annual Christmas Parade. Lin Lau, Lin Liu.
Good evening.
You can pull it down, hold on.
I don't know how. I don't know how, sorry. I'm not, this is new to me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, board and members who are here at the meeting. I'm Lin Liu. I'm president of the Kapahulu Moylili Lions Club. As you may be aware, we've been sponsoring the Moylili Christmas Parade for the past sixty years. And we always have it on the second Thursday in December. I'm here today in person, thank you, to request the board approve and have a resolution for our club to hold this annual Christmas parade. The parade route has not changed. We start at Kuhyo Elementary School, walk along King Street on the F side and go into Beritania Street and then make a left on Eisenberg. And the parade does not go into Stadium Park, but we disband on Eisenberg Street. We, last year, we had about twenty-five participants from the schools to the community center to some children's activity classes. And we also have some organizations and some businesses that join our parade. The Lions Club generously donate candy and some Christmas trinkets and like light sticks that we pass along the parade. It usually, oh, it starts exactly at six thirty in the evening. And we do have representatives from the mayor's office, from the police, if they're available to come, as well as the fire engine. We have two marching bands, Saint Louis and recently the Sacred Heart Girls joined the band, so there is a combined band. They march in the parade as well as the Kaemaki High School band. And then we have the ROTC, the flag bearers, all that. The Humane Society also brings their four-legged and that's really cute. Everybody enjoys that. Let's see, we also do not charge participants to participate in the parade. And we do donate to the schools, Kaemaki, Sacred Heart, Saint Louis, to their music department, the ROTC department. And throughout the year, if they come to us for a donation, we review it. And if it falls within our global causes, then we donate. So I am here to ask the board to give us a favorable approval and produce a resolution so we can go on with our parade on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions?
Don't have a resolution right now, but in the next agenda item, we can put a resolution to pass and approve.
That would be great. Thank you so much. No questions? No. Oh, thank you very much. Really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, Governor's Coordinator on the Homelessness, Mr. John Mazuno is here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna share with you what we've been doing regarding homelessness. We do get it that homelessness is a big issue and everyone knows it's, it seems to be unsolvable. Nationwide, there was a twelve percent increase in homelessness. Working with the governor Green and our partners at the city and county of Honolulu, Samoku, Mayor Blangjardi. To date, from January, since we took over, since we took this job, January twenty twenty-four, state has worked with the county. And and in addition to that, on the other islands, built ten kahali, ten kahali. These are villages for people that are homeless. They are very unique and each one is different and I'll explain. So usually when I share or I present at neighborhood boards, they ask, what are the kahali? How many beds do you have? What type of clientele or residents are in that kahali? And first off, let me explain homelessness is complex. We all get that. But we need to be bold and epic in what we're doing. Definition of insanity is to do the same thing over again, expecting different results. We're not doing that. So first off, we built the One Word Kahali, thirty-four beds. Generally, this is just general homeless. When we work with One Word, they had asked, the community had asked that that kahali be focused on accepting people from the One Word area. And we did that. Generally, kahali that we built, the villages that we build are for the area homeless. We're not going to try to bring homeless from Waianae or Maui or the mainland. We just don't do that. That's thirty-four beds, One Word. The second kahali, Middle Street, twenty homeless. They're generally from the Middle Street area. The third kahali is in Kilihi on Wilson Street, twenty-four beds. This is a different kahali. This is for those that are getting out of drug rehab. So if I'm the guy that just successfully got through detox and a judge orders me to go to, you know, clean, clean living to to ensure my rehabilitation, I would be going to this type of kahali. Again, Wilson Street, twenty-four beds. Very strict. They do urine tests and you have a schedule and if you don't follow the rules, you're you're kicked out. People in this kahali usually get a job within three to four months. Usually after nine months, they're good enough to go. Whenever you go addiction, if if I have an addiction, everyone knows, even if I go through rehab, it's gonna be with me for the rest of my life. I'm gonna have to have a support team. I'm gonna have to, a peer group, I may have to go to AA. This is just the tip of the iceberg when I talk about the Wilson Street Kahali for twenty-four people who are homeless, who are coming out of successful drug rehab programs. This will help them get stabilized and eventually get a job and then eventually go to permanent support housing. The fourth kahali, I believe Samoku mentioned it last meeting for you all. Waikiki Vista, this was a joint project with the city and county Honolulu with Governor Green and Mayor Blangjardi, myself and Samoku. This is a big one. It houses in full capacity thirty-eight homeless families. Again, homeless families. What is the occupancy? What thirty-eight families, how much does that equate to? Approximately hundred twenty. A hundred and twenty homeless family members will now have a house, a place to to call home. So that's the Waikiki Vista. That was our fourth kahali. Fifth kahali that we opened up is in Evilay, First Hawaiian Bank. This is with Dr. Miskovich, the same Dr. Miskovich that did the COVID testing. We're grateful to work with him. This is also another joint state and city project. This kahali is different because this is for the people that you you kind of see in the streets yelling. Or or just, they have extreme mental conditions or a drug addiction or both. They're duly diagnosed. Many of these people are people have significant needs. And so this is a kahali dedicated for for that that segment. The other thing, this actually saved the state and hospitals probably millions of dollars that years in. If I'm the frequent flyer that has a mental condition, maybe a drug addiction, so I have both. I frequently go to Queens ER. I get to stay in acute care bed space because I know certain things to say. That's three thousand nine hundred dollars a night. This medical respite, probably the cost breakdown would be about a hundred twenty dollars a night to have me there with medical staff, with a physician, with an RN, with social workers. So although it might seem high maintenance, this serves its purpose. Again, we've got sixty beds. This is a medical respite kahali. This is in Evilay at the old Evilay First Hawaiian Bank. We've got two more kahalics getting ready to open up in Evilay. One is the Evilay Resource Center, which is located, gosh, just no more than, less than a hundred yards from where the First Hawaiian Bank is. The Resource Center, we've got a hundred beds in there. That's gonna be just for our general homeless, not not those with special needs or extreme mental conditions, just a hundred, hundred beds for that, opening up in October of twenty twenty-four. And then a next, another kahali right in between First Hawaiian Bank and that Evilay Resource Center. Right at the state bezde office right across Ala Park is another kahali that's gonna have fifty-eight tiny homes. Again, this will probably be for regular homeless. We're targeting couples because these are the tiny homes. You know, same-sex couples, regular couples, whoever, they can probably be catered at this kahali. Again, as I go through the kahali, you notice we've got drug rehab, we've got people that are, you know, coming out of prison. We've got, you know, elderly, we've, we've got different kahali for different people. Like I said, homelessness is quite complex. We're gonna be opening up in a couple of weeks Cedar Church in Kilihi. This is a big one. We've got a donor that provided two million dollars for the infrastructure, some of the tiny homes and actually rebuilt the church. The the fortunate thing for us, I know people are gonna say separation church and state. Guys, the only way we're going to truly address homelessness, we've gotta throw that book out of the window and say that we've gotta work with churches, faith-based organizations and all people that want to help us move the needle to reduce homelessness. Know the pastor, Pastor Kim's a great friend of mine. Been working with him as a legislator for eighteen years. Now I'm in a different role. We we partnered on this. It's gonna have twenty-six beds. You say, hey, that's only twenty-six beds. This is targeted for kupuna. When we did the twenty twenty-four point time count, I was surprised to see how many seniors there were, how many kupuna that were out there and and houseless. The twenty-six beds at Cedar Church in Kilihi will be probably like a triage center. So if I'm the eighty-five-year-old, have difficulty walking, I check in there, of course, kupuna services. But we've got case managers to work with me after a month or two to try to get me into a Medicaid nursing home where I'll probably spend the rest of my life, the the rest of my three, five, seven years left. So again, it'll open up another bed for kupuna. Like I said, different kahali for our different groups. We have the US vets. I'm sorry, we did not open up the US vets yet. That will be for sixty, about sixty people, twelve families, families, homeless families with kids and nineteen, a dorm for nineteen individuals. It's gonna be a split between male and female for the dorm. That'll be opening up in October twenty twenty-four.
You know, you are on mute, I think.
Sorry, was I on mute the whole time?
No, no, just for a few seconds.
Okay, hey, thanks, Chair. I apologize, guys. So I think I did mention Cedar Church, US vets, sixty, will be opening up for sixty homeless. Will be opening up in October of twenty twenty-four. Be open up next month. Fernhurst, YWCA. Hey, hey, guys, this is a different kahali. This is targeted at women coming out of prison. So they're gonna re-enter. It's called re-entry. Many times women coming out of prison, they may need a little bit of help getting a job. They they need a place to call them, consider it being home. And YW, YWCA does a great job at helping our women coming out of prison get back on their feet. This is targeted at getting our women a job. And usually after, I'd say, this is a little longer, nine months to a year, some may even take two years. Once they're stabilized and once they they've got a job, they will then leave and open up another bed. YWCA Fernhurst is great because they have job training and education there, a number of computers. So again, I wish we had more beds, twenty-nine, but again, once that person comes out of prison, goes there, gets rehabilitated, gets educated, gets a job. Then nine months, a year, at the most, two years, and then they're off and the beds open up for another person. That's number six. Number seven, Kilihi, it's called Village of Redemption. This is thirty beds. Guys, this is again a re-entry program. So if I'm coming out of O triple C and I'm homeless, hey, everyone knows if I don't have a home, I don't have money, I'm probably gonna rob again or something. I might just go right back to jail. That's this is an effort to reduce recidivism and help our people coming out of prison. Village of Redemption, also located in Kilihi, is for men coming out of prison. Thirty beds for men coming out of prison. Pro officer will will be there, making sure that whoever is there will hopefully, you know, have negative urine tests. We try to get them a job within three to four months. Usually the time there is is similar to Fernhurst for the women. Nine months to a year. If they need to stay there a little longer, they will. But we do our best to get our our people, you know, stable, get them a job and then hopefully they can transition out to, back to their family or to permanent support housing. So again, that was Kilihi Village of Redemption, thirty beds for people coming out of prison. That's number seven. Number eight, another kahali in Kilihi, kahali in Kilihi. This is off of Helena Street. This is run by IHS, the same person, Connie Mitchell. This is for fourteen beds, a little smaller. This is also for men only coming out of prison, re-entry, re-entry, same thing, getting them a job, getting them stable. And if they meet all the qualifications, they're on their way. They get the permanent support housing after about a year or so. On Maui, and I know this is not Oahu, but I just wanted to share statewide, we have Hualhona Onene. Now, we've had some problems there, but that house houses a hundred thirty, a hundred thirty homeless on Maui. Many of the victims victims were homeless before the fire and so that's where they're at. Maui, a hundred thirty homeless. Some of them were homeless before the fire. Some of them became homeless after the fire. That's Maui. We're trying to get another location, Mahi Pono, that's a farm. We're trying to partner with them. There's talks of of contract and negotiation and back and forth. If that happens, and I can't, there's no guarantee, but if it were to work out, we could have as as much as two hundred homeless families. Families housed there. And if we can do that, we're getting closer to to ending homeless on Maui. The importance of that is if we can end homeless in one of the counties, proof of concept, and do it in Maui, guys, then Kauai's next, Big Island's next, and of course, a big enchilada is Oahu. So so that's our our strategy. Like I said, it's outside of the box. We're doing a lot of things differently that no administration has done in the past. Kauai, we're working with Majority Leader Makamora for Kauai, Mahalona Hospital Campus, thirty-two. It's, that's interesting. It's more of kind of like affordable housing units. It looks like condo units. They're built pretty nice. But thirty-two units, it's not cheap. It's gonna cost the state two point five million. But it's a partnership with Kauai, Marikauakami, that we're gonna go in. It's probably a five million dollar project. I know it doesn't sound like much, only thirty-two units, but that's thirty-two families that were homeless that we're now gonna house. After six months, we're asking them to pay three hundred dollars rent. So they're they're not gonna get, you know, go by freely. They're they're gonna be paying rent after six months. Again, it's a little slower, not as aggressive. It costs a little bit, but it's a partnership with Kauai. We're gonna split the cost on on that kahali. Hilo, Hilo, we just opened up Salvation Army last week in Hilo. That has twenty-nine, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-five beds. Like I said, Salvation Army is running that. What they're, it's now, I know it sounds little, only twenty-five beds. And that's for a wide variety of homeless. The the key to that, though, I was going back and forth with the negotiation because the contract's over a million dollars. I didn't think it was prudent to spend that much money, but Mayor Roth, Governor Green and I agreed at the end. The people that are going to the Salvation Army at night, they're going to help them with wraparound services eventually. If I'm one of them that'll go there at night to sleep, hopefully in a week or two, they can help me with wraparound services and possibly, possibly get me to permanent support housing out of the Salvation Army tent. And if we do that, we're gonna open up another bed. So although it's only twenty-five beds in Hilo, we do this right. By the end of the year, we may have served over a hundred or maybe a hundred fifty homeless gotten, getting them off the street. So that's, that's the mindset with the Hilo Salvation Army homeless kahali that we have with only twenty-five beds. But again, at the end of the day, if we can get them in a permanent support housing, open up another bed, by the end of the year, we may have served hopefully a hundred homeless and that that'll be good. Kona, we're looking for seventy-five tiny homes, but that's gonna be built in December of twenty twenty-four. And Hilo, another, not too far from the Salvation Army down the street, we're looking at renting out an apartment complex for diversion and re-entry. So if I'm the guy on a big island that committed, I stole a candy bar, petty misdemeanor. Petty misdemeanor to misdemeanor, that's six months or less. What happens is public defender, prosecutor, they go to the court and say, Judge, Judge Huddy, Mazuno messed up. He stole a candy bar, he's homeless, he's got a mental condition and an addiction. We would like to send him into this diversion program where he can get employment skills and get a job. And at least he has housing, better than just putting him in in a cage for six months. So prosecutor, public defender agree, judge agrees, I go to the diversionary program, stay there for six months, get a job. My urine test need to be negative. If if all that works out, come back to court, public defender, prosecutor there. Hey, Mazuno did his his time. He did a good job at the diversion program. He got a job, by the way. He got his GED. Your honor, we're asking that the case be dismissed, no criminal record. He did a good job or no further criminal record on this guy. That's again, Hilo, it's gonna house about twenty-four. This is gonna be coed. Downstairs will be twelve beds for men, upstairs will be twelve beds for women. It'll be both diversion, instead of going to jail, I go to this kahali or re-entry. If I'm coming out of prison, but I don't have a place to stay, I can stay there and they'll hook me up with a job skill and try to get me employed in in three to four months. That's the kahali. Just wanna give you all a breakdown because many times when I go to the neighborhood boards, they're asking, hey, Mazuno, is that a hundred, is that five hundred? How many people? hey, Muzuno, is that a hundred? Is that five hundred? How many people? So for this year only, from January twenty-twenty-four, we will have by the end of this year, I'm sorry, today, today, like today, right now, if you ask me, what's the number of beds since you took in your, your position as Director of the Statewide Homelessness and Housing Solutions Office? How many have you housed, dude? The number is four-hundred-eighty-six. Four-hundred-eighty-six. I started in January of twenty-twenty-four. I've got four-hundred-eighty-six people off the streets, no longer homeless. By the end of the year, would I project more? If everything goes correctly, I've got three-hundred-seventy-five more beds coming up. So if all things projected go well, I told the governor, I'm, I'm between, I'm between seven-hundred to, to nine-hundred. About eight-hundred-sixty-one beds for homeless by the end of twenty-twenty-four. It, it's a lot higher than, than both my, myself and Governor anticipated. Uh, we thought this would take a couple of years to do. Here, here's the proof, though. Everybody does great. You know, you, you, you can't solve homeless. Nobody can solve homeless. Fine, I, I'm cool. Can say what you want. Please, take a look, drive by evilly and, and look at the sidewalks. At the end of the day, the test is gonna be, look at the sidewalks, are there tents? Are there structures? Are there people sleeping on sidewalks? Go to downtown Chinatown, please, and, and just take a look, just drive by, take a look. And it's gonna get better. And, and please, I actually appreciate working with ACLU. This is not against um people's rights. Homeless people have the right to healthcare. Homeless people, the most powerful medicine you can give a homeless person is housing. You can do that. I, I have an addiction and, and I have um, mental condition. If you give me housing, you can help stabilize me. And with the right wraparound services, maybe you can just maybe help rehabilitate me and get me a job. By the way, I did wanna say this, it kinda trips out everybody whenever I go to the neighborhood boards. Nobody gets a free ride. If I'm homeless guy and I go to Middle Street at that Kalahale, H-triple-C, HRC, H, H-three-R-C, that's Harm Reduction, that's Heather Luster, she's our operator. If I go there, she's going to get me signed up for Medicaid. What does that mean? I've got health insurance, so I'm not gonna bankrupt the state or, or Queen's Hospital, going to the ER. I've got Medicaid health insurance. Second, um, my operator's gonna make sure I get SNAP. SNAP, that's food stamps. Hey, guys, SNAP is one-hundred percent pure Medicaid funds, uh, pure federal funds. Why is that important? Um, Moody's Analytics did a study nationwide that showed for every one SNAP dollar, one federal SNAP dollar, it helps to generate to the economy a dollar seventy. So how much is that?
Chair, Chair, can we, can we, can we please speed this up because the time is running? And I understand that you'll try to be more specific, but we're running out of time at the same time. If you can, just be a little bit quick.
Uh, I, I'm, guys, I'm done. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Any question from the board?
Uh, Member Quadri.
John, uh, John, are you still there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
John, I, I commend you, uh, your, your focus, your discipline, your commitment to getting people off the streets right now. Uh, I, I didn't keep the math, I didn't do the math, the running total, uh, the first number. Do you know the accurate number, close to how many homeless people on this island of Oahu right now, today?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, so I'm looking at just chronically homeless. We've got over four thousand, four thousand three hundred. Chronically homeless, meaning they're on the beach or they're uh in the mountains. They're in remote areas. They don't have any roof. They don't have any.
On Oahu, on Oahu.
Uh, it's statewide, sir, statewide.
Statewide. John, the eight-hundred-and-sixty-four beds by the end of this uh calendar year uh is, is, is uh statewide, all the islands together?
Yeah, yes, sir. It's eight-sixty-one, sir, eight-sixty-one for the state. Yes, sir.
And then I think uh hi- hi- history tells us that Australia was a dumping ground for criminals several hundred years ago. Hawaii has turned into that same dumping ground where mayors of big, uh, big-time cities on the mainland uh and their, and their Visitors Bureau wanna get people off the sidewalks that are, you know, especially dead bodies, especially during winter. And they're sending them to Hawaii.
Yes, sir.
You guys are aware of that, right?
Yes, sir. If you look at a.
The question, and we, because we gotta wrap this up, the question is, the question, go ahead.
You have a question, so I'm gonna answer the question. I was on a, wrote the return home bill that became law last year when I was in the legislature. We're using it right now. We're sending hundreds of homeless people from the mainland back.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other question?
Member Quadri, I did just wanna make an important announcement that Vice Chair Salas has uh joined the meeting in person here. So thank you so much for running this part. Uh, Vice Chair Salas is gonna run the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Quadri.
Sorry about that. Uh, let's open up questions to the rest of the board.
I just have one question. All those homeless people and families, are the children going to school or we just put them in a house?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Everyone that, that we have at Kalahale, the rule is the, the kids go to school. The kids go to school. We, we have, people don't understand us. After six months, they're gonna pay for rent. They're gonna pay at least, not, not a lot, not a lot. They're gonna pay three hundred dollars. If you're a Kofa migrant and you can't afford that, you're gonna do maintenance or security. You're gonna work. A lot of people don't get that. I know a lot of people don't understand homelessness, and that's cool.
Thank you, John, for coming to the meeting. I am curious from the legislature side. I know you just exited the legislature, but what type of bills need to be passed um to support the type of work at the scale that you guys want to do?
Uh, I, I know this sounds a bit um self-serving. More funding to rehabilitate people that's focused on a root cause of homelessness, so they don't become homeless or continue to become homeless. We can reduce homelessness, we reduce crime, we reduce recidivism, and we save taxpayers money. Get our people educated. Um, so it's, sorry, it's self-serving, but a little more money, get our Kalahale connected to workforce development and education. Get our people working, and like I said, usually after, after, after our Kalahale, after six months, they gotta pay rent. It's not much, it's three hundred dollars a month, but they gotta pay.
Members of the community, go up, up to the mic. The mic stand, please.
Uh, yes, um, thank you. I applaud what you're doing. Um, we're Mo'eele'eele, however, and you do know that there's a huge population underneath the Kapilani Bridge. And if you would consider uh moving out the trailers across from Foodland, uh, because it's government property and those are government trailers, move them somewhere else and put in tiny homes there. And also I would suggest that you have um in many places around town, self-cleaning showers and bathrooms. That will do a whole lot to cleaning up the whole of the neighborhood and having them be a lot more responsible. So Mo'eele'eele needs help too. Thank you.
No, good point, good point. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I, I know that you mentioned uh working with churches, right? So the question is, like, what resources and, and help you guys are providing to the churches? Because I know that so many homeless, sometimes they're lost, um, they, they lose hope. And when they're in churches, I believe that's when they try to gain some, some hopes. So what resources are you guys uh in, 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 in help you guys providing to the churches?
Good, thank you, sir. It, it all depends. So I've got another Kalahale I didn't mention yet. It's on the west side. We're still in the early stages of it, so I didn't wanna share too much, but this is, uh, I won't even mention the church name. They want, they, the churches, you prob, you've seen this before, I'm sure. It's interesting. The shape is igloos, igloos. Um, and it's for, for families, single mothers with children. So they wanna do twenty-four, so twenty-four families, single mothers with children. That church is gonna provide uh food, education, the kids will have transportation, go to school. They need all the help they can get with, um, again, clothes, supplies, you name it. The church that we have currently ready to open, Cedar Church in Kalihii, um, we had a generous donor, he's a contractor, by the way, that, that put in two million of his own money. So, so thank God, that church is, is actually pretty good. They're also a, a mini outlet for the Hawaii Food Bank. So they actually serve as a church, but they also donate food to the people that are either homeless or, or just needy. And so it doubles up as not only a, a Kalahale, but it's also serving, sharing with uh food from the Hawaii Food Bank. Luckily, Cedar Church in Kalihii, because of that generous donor, that they're, I think they're, they're kind of okay. But, but churches, when he donations, clothes, um, if, if you contact my office, we can connect you with the churches that are working with us to help house homeless. I, I just don't wanna take too much of the time because I know it's, it's getting late and I don't wanna um take too much more time.
Good.
Um, in regards to the Kofa migrants that you were talking about earlier, um, from what I understand, the, the uh monies that are received from the feds, it's dis, is dispersed equally amongst the United States, all the states in, in America. Because we have a, well, I'm guessing, a, a larger population, all these migrants, is there any efforts being made with our senators or, or legislators in DC to get, you know, more of that share?
I, I love that. Uh, beautiful question. Uh, you're brilliant, beautiful question. When I was the Chair of Health and Human Services um several years back, I flew to Washington DC to meet with the US Interior Director. And I, I told them that Hawaii needs more money for our Kofa migrants, um, our compact citizens, because w- we just have more. Uh, seems to be that California, um Guam and Hawaii has, has a lion's share of, of the compact citizens, Micronesian, um, Marshallis, uh, Koltzri, Chuk. Here's what, what the US Secretary said, uh, of Interior said, y- you know, um, back then, Rep. Muzuno, we'd love to help, but it all depends on the compact. And, and the compact dictates how much money we can share to each state or territory. Uh, he wanted to help, but that was his answer. Now, now the key to that, though, is we have strategic missile launch sites on many of the, the compact islands. So we try to bargain that and try to get more money. Uh, and China has, has developed some of the Kofa um states because I, I anticipate they wanna put an aircraft carrier there. So it's, it's a fight between the US and China and trying to get um more support. But you're right, unfortunately, the compact, it's not complex, but it, it's kind of like, you know, this is the pie, and that's how it's divided up. Excellent question. I did go there several years back. I did my best to try to get more of Hawaii's share because we seem to have more Kofa per capita than the other uh states. Um, but unfortunately, that's a big question. The compact is, is the, the enchilada. That, that's gonna determine where the money is split up. I, I wish I had a better answer, uh, but you're on top of something. You're correct. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, that's, that's the hardcore facts and the best answer I can give.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions online? Next agenda item, approval written summaries for video record Thursday, June sixth, twenty-twenty-four, Thursday, August first, twenty-twenty-four. Approved as written. Oh, is there any quest, uh, corrections? Moving on to Board of Water Supply.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Anos, representing Border Water tonight. Um, filling in for Steven. He unfortunately couldn't make it today, but I'll be giving our monthly report. I'm gonna be starting with the main break report. There was only one main break last month. That occurred on August twenty-sixth. That was a six-inch diameter pipe at eight-eighteen Willie Willie Street, and that was installed in nineteen thirty-one. So next I'll be moving on to our general water announcements. I'm gonna be talking about the Imagine a Day Without Water event. Get ready for the annual Imagine a Day Without Water event on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM at Kapolei Regional Park. Come join the Border Water Supply and various city, state, and community agencies and organizations for a day full of activities that focus on the value of water. Interactive exhibits including rain barrel workshops, cerescape plant crafting activities, and succulent mini workshops and more. Plus, Ono food will be available for purchase. Admission is free for those of all ages. Keiki to Kupuna. Find out more at www dot borderwatersupply dot com slash one water Hawaii. And I also brought some flyers about the Imagine a Day Without Water event. Uh, it's on the back table if anyone's interested. But that's the end of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Next, we have the mayor's representative, Michael O'Keefe.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, Mike O'Keefe, Deputy Director with the City's Department of Environmental Services. Uh, just one announcement for this month. Um, the mayor's new newsletter is out. Um, I'll drop the link to the newsletter in the chat, but it covers a range of topics ranging from the cities taking action to address crime along the Waianae Coast and uh nearly thirty brand-new security cameras installed in Chinatown, um, with many more uh along the way. There was one follow-up item from last month, uh, an item related to crosswalk safety. A resident raised concerns about a crosswalk on Kapilani Boulevard adjacent to the McCully Ala Wai Community Playground. There were multiple instances of closed pedestrian accidents due to the high amount of traffic on the turning left lane to Waikiki. Uh, despite the crosswalks uh being blacked out and the crossing signs being removed, uh, the resident was informed that the crosswalks can still be used legally. So, uh, so City Street, so the City's Department of Envir, uh, sorry, Department of Transportation Services responded to this question. Um, and there's, the response is a, a little lengthy, so please bear with me, but it contains um some important information. Um, the Department of Transportation Services, or DTS, completed their investigation on Kapilani Boulevard, which included a site inspection and a review of their records. In accordance with the Hawaii Revised Statutes, Section twenty-nine, two-ninety-one, C dash one, a cross is, is uh a portion of a roadway at an intersection included within the connection of the lateral lines of the sidewalk or opposite sides of the highway, measured from the curbs or in the absence of curbs from the edges of the traversable roadway at an intersection. Although the crosswalk markings were removed at this location, uh, DTS noted that pedestrians are still legally able to cross there uh in an, in a quote-unquote unmarked crosswalk. Uh, uh, DTS mentioned that they are currently procuring uh pedestrian crossing signs at some locations where crosswalk markings have been removed. And they did confirm that their site inspection of the location that was raised at last month's meeting, um, the signs at that location were missing. So when they, when they get the new signs in, they're gonna go back and install, uh, install some signs there. Um, so they have a, a, a work order for that. Um, the depart, the City's Department of Facility Maintenance does that work. And you can get, i- if you're interested, um, you can get a status on the installation of those signs uh by calling um the Department of Facility Maintenance at eight oh eight seven six eight three six two one or eight oh eight seven six eight three six two two. And you can reference the work order number. It's P S W O two two five two zero. And that was the only uh item um from last month. Um, so that concludes my report, but I'm happy to, to take any questions.
Thank you. Um, do you know roughly how many more security cameras they're planning to be installed downtown?
I don't, but I can, I'm sure I can easily find that out.
Any other questions from the board? If you're in the public, please feel free to line up at the microphone. Maureen?
Hi, Mike. I know that we've emailed about more city officials coming to the meetings.
Hi, Mike. I know that we've emailed about more city officials coming to the meetings. I just was wondering for future or for the October meeting, if we could get anyone from planning and permitting out here? That would be.
Yeah, sure, Morgan. Did you any any particular um topic that you wanted them to cover?
I know they've like put in a lot of different ways to try to I don't know if accelerate the permitting process is the right word, but bring more transparency to where permitting is at, whether it's um investing in some changes that allow people to look up where their permit it is in the process. I think they were also going to try to hire some contractors to um be a part of that and to clear through all the different applications that people had had. Anyway, I had read different articles um in Civil Beat about this, and I thought it'd be interesting to have someone from the actual office come to chat with us.
Yeah, sure thing. I'll I'll make the request, and I would imagine they'll come.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, Michael, I have just one question. It has nothing to do with Morili- Moriliili Makali. Put on the corner of Baritania and Keamoko, there's that. It's a gas station and a car wash. What it what happened was evidently the bus company pulled down the shelter for the for the riders. And it's laying there in the sidewalk, and it makes me think that we don't allow homeless to lay down on the sidewalk. We have this building that they just trampled. It's uh, I don't know, it's been there for for a while. Anyhow, could you check that and get rid of that thing? It's a corner of Baritania and Keamoko.
Okay, and just so I I I confirm my understanding, Paul, bus, there was a a bus shelter for riders that was pulled down. But there's an there's another structure that's kind of a blight?
No, I guess it was the old structures where they had the little kiosk, the little roof kind of thing, and now all they have is seats. But if you if you drive past it, you'll you go, hey, what's that doing there?
Okay, yeah, I'll 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 find out.
Questions from the public?
Hi, Michael. My name is Drew, and um I have a question. Uh, currently on Kapialani in the mornings, the contraflow program has been uh discontinued. And I'm curious if there could be a study done, and the reason I ask why is because in the morning I live at the Marco Polo and I make a right and go towards Hawaii Kai. And when the contraflow is intact, it gets bottlenecked down to one lane. And oftentimes, there's cars parked there over time. They don't get towed, so it's a lot of traffic. I've really noticed since the contraflow is not there, traffic is much smoother. And so I'm curious if a study can be done to see if we actually need the contraflow at that location in the mornings.
Good question. Thanks.
Hi, Mike. I'm Laura Ruby again. Um, my question today is, um, the, um, I would like you to ask the mayor if uh he has had any report at all about a full EIS that would the uh DTS and Complete Streets should be working on for the proposed um ill-fated bridge across the canal. Um, it's been years since twenty fifteen, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three, and this year. And we have, we as the community have never received any response at all back from all the many written testimonies and the oral presentations. They have triggered what's called an MOA, um, and they're supposed to be getting back to us, but that MOA was really a a very thinly disguised way to move them forward. We do not think that it is a full expression, a full analysis of what the actual site is, and it is called a site. It's the canal, the promenade, and the Alaui uh park that are all together in historic proportions. And uh they, it really needs to be addressed. And so I'd like um like to have a response directly from the mayor, and especially he was very concerned over reducing the lane of um of of um vehicular traffic on Alaui Boulevard, too. So that is not addressed yet either. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for the follow up.
Hi, my name is Merrill. I just wanted to address um, bring to your attention one one of the things that's going on during traffic hour on Baritania. And also another area on the corner of Eisenberg and Baritania. So that would be the um Malka side of Baritania on Eisenberg. There's a little, there's a little corner there from Young Street that turns right, going towards Baritania, and there's there's still cars parking on the right side during um from three thirty to six thirty, I believe, or three thirty to six o'clock. There's a, there's a no parking. It's a no parking zone, but we're still having vehicles parked there. And the other one is over here along Baritania from just before Makali. Um, I don't know what the street is right here going up, but there's a, there's a vape shop right around on on Baritania there, and there's always a car almost almost daily blocking up that stall so they can go in that um vape shop, and they're they're blocking up that lane, which is a no parking zone during traffic hours as well. And also down by Stadium Park, there's still vehicles parking on the far right side. I'm talking about the far right side of Baritania. Um, going down Diamond Head on Baritania during traffic hours. We're still having cars parked there. Um, and so we could do something to address that issue, please. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. I'll follow up.
Any questions online? Thanks, Michael. Moving on to University of Hawaii. Not here. Moving on to the governor's representative.
Good evening. My name is Matt Devontae. I'm the governor's representative. Um, I had hoped to have um a presentation tonight. Um, one of the board members had asked for the Department of Education to come down uh and talk about cell phones in schools and some enrollment numbers. Uh, unfortunately, we weren't able to make it on the agenda for this month. Um, but the deputy superintendent, one of the deputy superintendents and the complex area superintendent for this area um have both said that they would like to come down uh in a future month to talk to you folks about that issue. So hopefully we can get that scheduled in a future meeting. Uh, but other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions that anybody has. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I do. I I did talk to that lady, and uh we said we set it for next month.
Okay, you know, I had heard from, um, I'm sorry, I had heard from Heidi Armstrong, the deputy superintendent, and uh one of them has a conflict next month. I think they're both available in December. Um, but uh, we can work on that scheduling.
Yeah, because it was full.
Yeah.
As you can see.
Yes, I understand.
The request was sent at the beginning of August. Okay.
Questions from the public? Questions from online? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, is there any way that we can have a representative for from the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations?
Yes, I can make that request. Uh, what would you like them to talk about?
Oh, there, well, there is, uh, uh, I want to talk about unemployment.
Okay, uh, we can, I can make that request. Um, if there's anything specific about unemployment that you would like them to be prepared for, um, you can, you can let me know so that they can come as prepared as possible.
Okay, I I talked to you a flyer about this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the next topic, elected officials. We have Councilmember Calvin Se. Not present. Moving on to Representative Andrew Garrett.
Hi, sorry, this is Janelle from Councilmember Se's office. Um, I had uh Chastity on, but I'm not sure if she's able to unmute. Um, he is unavailable. He's at a conference. Um, so we're here to take any questions or concerns back.
Questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Okay, good evening. My name is Merrill. Um, I've been in touch with uh Calvin Se's office for a few months now. And we've been addressing issues in our area on Coolidge Street, Eighth Street, Eisenberg, about parking issues, um, derelict vehicles, abandoned vehicles, all that kind of stuff. So um last month and the month, uh, meeting before that, which was June. So I brought up a a ongoing issue with a vehicle that was parked on Coolidge Street. And you guys got that vehicle out of there, and I want to just express my sincere gratitude for doing that. Not only just getting the vehicle, but listening to my voice and and and, you know, doing doing the task necessary to get that guy out. And I did speak with Chastity. She's been um emailing me, and I also called her office because I was quick to jump on the phone and 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 uh light a fire under you guys to get that thing going. So I made it a point to call you guys and express my 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 gratitude as well. And I want to say publicly as well that I am very grateful that you guys have been addressing the issues and that you guys have been keeping in contact. And um I know that Chastity is aware that that vehicle did get pulled out of out of the tow yard, and he's back on Eisenberg Street again. And I know that you guys are addressing that issue as well because the vehicle is illegal. It's it's um out uh, everything's illegal on that vehicle, but he somehow is getting getting his vehicle out and all that. But my point is that I'm grateful, and I want to say thank you, and I want to say thank you to Calvin as well, because I've been, I've been really giving it to him these last three months, these last three meetings, and I want to say that I am very grateful in in that same capacity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Merrill. And I know um Chastity can hear you. I don't know if she's able to unmute, but I I know she's on. I just texted her. Um, and she is, oh, there she's she's unmuted, but I know she's working um, trying to find different outlets to to deal with that issue. Um, because that one had been told previously as well. It just keeps coming back.
Hi, Merrill. I just wanted to jump on to say um, thank you so much for your kind words. Um, and I just want to also reach out to yourself, and I believe Betsy is also in the audience. Um, I want to say thank you to you folks for being such proactive community members. Um, I do plan on doing some walkthrough with both of you, and I want to extend that to any other community member who wants to reach out to me and express their concerns, not only at the neighborhood boards, but please feel feel free to reach out to me, and I'll drop my email address if anybody wants to have a chat.
Okay, so thanks again, Chastity. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, hello, um Laura Ruby again. Um, I have two very quick things. Um, first of all, we have horrendous traffic problems from the parents of the Iolani school students that clog up our neighborhood entirely. Plus, they run the stop sign every single day and speed up around the corner of Heevai and and University, making it very dangerous for parents and kids coming to Alaui School. Um, I suggest that they rent out uh the Shinioen parking lots off-site and have little vans that transport the kids over to Iolani School so the parents and their cars do not impact our neighborhood. I had to sit in ten minutes waiting to get into my own driveway because of them. So it's rather hard. The other thing is, um, I am very sorry to say that um Councilmember Se again put something in that is not reflective of our community, and that is Bill fifty-three. I know it's already had its first reading. Its second reading will come up. I wish he would withdraw it. It is against a community input. It has to do with putting DPP uh in charge of uh certain things like walkways and transportation and various other things. It is against the whole idea of community representation. So I wish he would withdraw it, please. Thank you.
Hi, Janelle. I just wanted to um second Laura Ruby's comment about Iolani traffic in that area, and Laura has previously supported putting a raised sidewalk there, among other things, maybe a stop sign. It would be wonderful if we could get something. There's obviously lots of people walking around between Iolani, Alaui Elementary School, the park, multiple apartment complex buildings, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of um intentionality around how to protect pedestrians and other people over there, especially in a place where there's a lot of children. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that back. I just want to confirm, is it only in that back area that's also sharing that road with Alaui Elementary, or is it in the front on um Dulsh- or Dul Street, Date Street?
The way the areas that I'm gonna, I'm talking about, and Laura can confirm where she feels is um, there's Heevai Street, University Street, and Kamoku Street. Um, Kamoku and Heevai and University all get backed up at various times.
All all goes up to Kapialani. It goes up to Date Street, and it goes up to a clog at the at the corner of um King and University. So it's a whole, a whole neighborhood is clogged up with the parents and not driving safely.
But the the particular intersection that we're talking or that we've mentioned before that we feel is not safe is the one that's at Heevai and University, specifically getting into Alaui Neighborhood Park. Um, yeah, there's no raised crosswalks, and there's lots of children.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Um, just to piggyback on that last comment is uh when the contraflow lane is there on Kapialani, people turning to go to Iolani in the morning, the traffic is extremely bad. So without the contraflow, it has been much better, and so that's why I asked earlier for if a study, if we actually need the contraflow.
Okay, I know in the past they've had transit security, especially at the start of the school years. Do you not see those those anymore? Or sorry, off-duty police officers?
I have seen the off-duty police officers, but they are stationed in these areas that we've referenced tonight.
Okay.
Nothing along Kapialani in the morning.
Okay.
All right, so so you say that you're gonna do a walkthrough. Uh, can you tell me when, where, and which district are you planning to do the walkthrough?
Hi, this is Chastity again. So um it's not necessarily a a specific time or place. It's just more so I'm gonna schedule a time with um, I know with Merrill, I reached out to Betsy Carmura. I did drop my name in the chat. Um, I didn't plan on it being a group walkthrough, but if you want to reach out to me, I can definitely give you some more information on that. Nothing has been specifically said.
Okay, so so when you when you do that, can you let us know so that way, because I would really love to be there?
Yes, I can.
Thanks.
Any more questions in person?
Either Chester D or Janelle, you're representing Calvin Se. He he's just about already to retire, yes?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
And 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 I I would like to see him go out on a high note. There's been some castigation uh uh on some of the things that he's done and not accomplished. Uh, on a high note, a positive note, I was there last week with him and Rick at the Nagasaki ceremonial peace ceremony. And uh it was a beautiful experience. I learned a lot on what really happened. Uh, horrific thing that happened, closing out the World War Two, Nagasaki and Hiroshima. Uh, and then we took the walk to the bell on the Fosse grounds. The words that Calvin spoke were really, really were beautiful. Can you convey that to him for me and the rest of us that were there as well as Rick? They both spoke so well and from the heart. And uh I know that uh it was genuine on Calvin's Calvin's part. We we really appreciated him that that morning at the peace ceremony.
Thank you. We'll absolutely pass that along.
Any questions online?
I have a question. Darrell, I'm Darrell. Online.
Go ahead, Darrell.
Uh, a concern in regards to um the Alaui Canal Promenade, um, the walking area behind uh behind the the gardens on the Malka side of the canal. Um, in regards to um the light poles, um, the lights, um, during, you know, for night walking. Um, a lot of the light poles are 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 out again. I I shared this concern a couple uh meetings ago. Um, and uh I also, like, today I saw a um, a light pole um down on the ground. Um, so uh I'm just wondering if they're gonna be doing any more uh, you know, uh, changes in the lights, uh, poles and lights, uh, or are they gonna um, you know, re- replace the the burnt out light bulbs and um a lot of the light poles that's uh out, um, you know, presently, especially by um the Mongrove area by um by the dog park. the Mongrove, uh, area by, um, by the dog park. Um, that section around there is pretty dark. A lot of, uh, people are, uh, sharing with me. I mean, walking and they're looking up and they're saying it's, is, is, is very dangerous or dark that, you know, it's scary. Uh, so, um, once again, I just, uh, wanna, uh, share that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know, um, Chastity's been working on something and, um, actually is meeting with some of the folks on the Waikiki landmark side, just to kind of overlook and see that promenade and, and all the new, uh, quote unquote, activity in that area and, um, what we can do to help. So we will, we will keep you posted and the board posted on, uh, updates on those poles as well.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions online? Thank you. Uh, moving on to next, uh, Representative Andrew Garrett. Representative Scott Nishimoto.
Representative. Oh, sorry. Uh, hi, hello. Hi, Chair and Board. This is Taylor, um, reaching out on behalf of Representative Scott Nishimoto. Um, you know, we're just happy to collect any comments from the community. We've received some emails this week about various matters in our community. So we're working to address those, but if there's anything else that comes up, we'd be happy to address it as well.
Any questions from the board? From the public? Online? Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Moving on to Representative Adrian Tam.
Aloha. Thank you so much for having me here today. Um, there hasn't been really much constituent concerns that have come in. Some have called about the trash pickup issue. Um, I particularly work with, um, Battalion Clubhouse on that. Um, what's the, what's happening is that there is a worker shortage for, um, the trash companies. Uh, other than you have my newsletters and I welcome any questions. Did you hear?
Questions from the board?
Hi, Representative Tam. Did you go to this, um, Waikiki Citizens Patrol relaunch today? And if so, could you share about what you guys are trying to do and how that's going and so forth? I don't exactly know. I, I was reading your newsletter. I wasn't exactly sure what the, um, mission of what you guys are trying to do was.
Yeah. So the Waikiki, um, community policing, um, program that we started back in twenty twenty-one has still been going on. Um, but it has dropped in participants and, um, you know, I attribute that to the fact that crime is going down in the area. So many constituents felt that it wasn't needed to go out to do these walks again, but we always want to remain vigilant. So we held a relaunch of the entire program with, um, and we invited many members of the community out to try to get them more involved with our citizens patrol.
How did the event go?
It was very well attended and it had a lot of good news coverage. We were partnering up with the Waikiki Business Improvement Association. So many businesses have also come out, including the, and the mayor has come out to the walk as well. And I think it's very successful and we've gotten more people coming out now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Public? Online? Thank you, Representative Tam. Uh, Senator Lesihara.
Hello. Um, I'm here to answer any questions if you had any. And, uh, I'm been enjoying listening to all the conversation tonight and, um, and appreciate the work that the neighborhood board is doing to, uh, be a venue for these issues that concern us all. And any kind of state policy work, uh, especially myself in the Senate, um, I, I stand ready and, uh, my staff uh, at the legislature and, um, um, let me know if there's particular things that, uh, anyone is interested in.
Any questions from the board? See no questions from the public. Questions online? Thank you, Senator Ihara. Uh, Senator Carol Fukunaga.
Good evening, Neighborhood Board members. It's been a very lively meeting. You know, normally I, um, participate online via Zoom because you have a very small portion of Senate District eleven in your, um, Neighborhood Board boundaries, but I did want to come this evening, uh, to talk about the PUC Development Plan Amendments that are being proposed. And I believe last month I did try and send everyone an email after the, um, presentation that was held at Kamaki High School. And so what I included in my report tonight is, um, can you hear me? Okay. I included some of the, uh, maps showing the boundaries for this region where the city is planning for additional density and infill in your region. And because this has really been a hot topic in many of your board meetings, I did want to make sure that I came and, um, met with you because the timetable that the council is currently on calls for them reviewing Bill twenty-four during the month of September. Their committee meeting is at the end of the month and they'll also be taking it up during the month of October. Hopefully if there is a lot of discussion, area legislators like myself, Senator Ihara, Senator Moriwaki and, um, the newly elected legislators will have a chance to work with you to identify and articulate any concerns that you may have regarding the city's plans. I know that, um, you know, it's, it's been a long process, but this is really an important time to talk about what you want to see in a safe, walkable and vibrant Makali Mo'eevili community. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you for giving us this great map and resource. And I'm just looking at this code right here and you use the words like low intensity, moderate intensity, high intensity. Um, I'm assuming intensity enters in, excuse me, refers to the number of floors of the buildings. Can you give a general sense of what low means versus moderate versus high?
Okay. I'm so sorry. I did not bring the whole report with me. I'm happy to, um, get the pages that gives you that description and send it to your, um, staff and have them circulated with the board.
So you, are you planning to, uh, have a meeting about this at one point or you're just informing us about what's gonna happen?
Well, I'm encouraging you to, uh, participate in shaping what you would like to see your region look like as we move forward on these amendments. You know, this is the first big amendment to the PUC Development Plan in a long time. And as someone who has represented parts of Alamoana, Waikiki and portions of Makali in the past, I can tell you, and I'm sure that all of you are very concerned about areas that you feel are deteriorating. And so this is really an opportunity for us to work with the community to improve areas that are sort of rundown, deteriorating, and also ensure that we involve as many people at the community level and our state, federal and, um, county legislators. And since your area has kind of been a period of transition, I thought I would, um, come tonight and really encourage all of you to, um, get involved. We're happy to help. Um, I know the timetable looks relatively short, but I think if there is a lot of discussion, I'm sure the council will, um, slow down the review of the proposed bill in order to give people an opportunity to participate.
Yeah, I can see here like September, October twenty twenty-four, but do we have a date and where this is gonna happen over here? Cause.
Okay. The, um, committee meetings for the city council are posted online. And I don't have the dates with me now, but I can include that in the information that I'll send to your Neighborhood Commission staff and then they can share it with all of you.
Senator, I wanted to say that I was at the meeting. I was at this meeting at Kamuki High School. And so I'm really grateful that you are trying to reiterate and maybe more digestible pieces. This thing that is gonna have a huge impact on our community. Um, at that Kamuki meeting, it was clear that we all need a little bit more time to digest. If it's something that we're not always keeping on top of, this is long-range planning. A team has been working on it for a very, very, very long time. And so, uh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Senator Fukuna, thank you. Um, I have a, a real concern. Of course, you know that we have this large Kui Lake place going up at forty-three stories in our neighborhood. But the real, one of the major problems is that it, there's a reversal of things as they should occur. Namely, the, um, DPP will not look at any of the infrastructure till that um, thing has already gone through the process of being permitted. Now, if, if it was reversed and said only so much infrastructure can be done in any one part of the community, that would allow people to understand it only goes so many stories high, or there, there's only so many units in any one building. And that would do a whole lot to helping, um, the community grow in a natural way.
Well, and I would encourage the board, you know, to solicit, um, uh, information from city and state agencies. And certainly I think for all of the area legislators, we'd be happy to help, uh, gather some of those folks so that you could meet with them and speak with them directly.
Thank you. Any questions online? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Uh, Senator Sharon Moriwaki. Next up, we have resident and community concerns.
Any board members first?
I went to a meeting put on by a Christian ministry here in Hawaii that organized, um, like an all-day event where IHS showed up Catholic charities and River of Life to talk about how churches could involve, can involve more with homelessness. And I ended up speaking with the IHS person who is running Waikiki Vista over here. And she told me that she would be down to give me a tour. So if anyone is interested in taking a tour of the facility, I would, I'm gonna be organizing one in the next couple of months. So come find me and I will make that happen.
Okay. Yes, I wanted to give an update to all of you folks on the board regarding what I had tried to do here in this community is to have an, an EIS, um, approved and resolution by the board. And some of you folks did not understand that this is about gathering information and now analyzing it for our community. And this is against, uh, or, or competing with the site of the proposed bridge, which is again, the canal, the promenade and the Alaway Park. Now, you folks did not choose to support it. However, the Diamond Head Board, the Manoa Board and the Makiki Board, all making a fringe around you folks, did approve this resolution. And it's been something that's been asked for since twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three and currently in this year. And we have, we, it has stalled in the Department of Transportation Services. Now, right now, we are, um, gathering groups together. The, um, Alaway Maoka Community Association in conjunction with others. And we are ready to move in such a way that would have made it a lot nicer if DTS and Complete Streets had worked with the community, but they do not work with the community. So that is the update right now. We'll let you know more, maybe in the next month, what's happening. But, uh, they're getting ready to shove it right in there without any community. Even though we have made community participation paramount, they are not accepting any of our, um, messages or anything in oral communication. So we, um, are gonna have something that's a crunch time that's coming right up and I hope you people will understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's getting kind of late. So my name is Ikaika. Uh, I'm, I was speaking on behalf of Betsy here, who's actually been spearheading the initiative to create a resolution that helps to address the issues that were the Alaway. So whether it's the, from the Bukiki Stream, the Palolo Stream, uh, the Manoa Stream and all the effluent that's heading out into the Alaway. Um, thanks to Betsy, it was acknowledged last meeting how she got eight dump trucks worth of trash taken out uh, over here at the corner of, uh, King and, uh, Kalakaua. Um, so what we're looking for is we're gonna be pitching a resolution. We're in the works right now of drafting one that will call on the city uh, to better maintain and to, uh, upkeep these riverways to keep them clean. Uh, and that's gonna be helping to keep the trash out, but also addressing the homeless situation in these waterways. Uh, and so without going too far into it, I'm just looking for anyone who else wants to join in. Uh, I'm not sure if Ian's on, uh, he's been helping out. Uh, but we're trying to get some heads together to draft a well-written resolution. We reached out to Hapa, uh, reached out to some of my friends who are in land law, uh, just to see, to put a lot of teeth into this resolution. So, uh, r- reach out to us if you want to join the hooey. Uh, with more minds means, uh, better words. And, uh, if anything, you guys can come talk through with me after. Uh, love to gather some information and hopefully grow our team out so that we can propose a really good piece of, uh, a resolution to get the city to, to move on top of this.
Thank you very much.
Hi, uh, my name is Betsy and some of you would know me from the last time. And thank you, Ikaika. Well, I guess he left. Um, in terms of trying to get, um, some resolutions and activities in terms of the stream. Because I consider that, um, that the homeless issue on the stream that we were looking specifically at Kalakaua and South King. But the stream issue goes beyond that. It's close to towards Makiki Bridge as well as other areas. So I forwarded some of, um, the draft of the resolution to Christopher. So I hope you received it. And, um, of course we're soliciting much more, you know, information from you folks than input. Um, the other issue I wanted to bring up today is the noise issue from the entertainment and the clubs and, um, and karaoke bars. Um, I live on the strip of Kalakaua that's right in between Century Center going to South King. And it's close to Palma Market and Don Quixote. And there's like small bars and like the Soju Bang on sixteen forty-nine. I've been dealing with the noise coming from it for the past year and a half. I've tried everything, tried to talk to the managers, tell them to do crowd control. He did lower the music, but you know, after, after he behaves for like a week or two, the noise and the crowds start coming up. So I finally lost my temper and then I went to the liquor commission and they were very helpful. So I wanted to give you guys a tip that if you have like, you know, loud restaurants or noise coming from the place, including the crowds coming out, um, it's best to go to the liquor commission because I've had like a conversation with them in-depth last night and they agreed to go to the Soju Bang. The only thing is that I was a little bit afraid about is, you know, possible repercussions or, or, you know, backlash. And I told the, um, liquor commission people, I didn't want to come home and to see the tires of a car slashed in my parking lot, you know, something like that. So just, just to give you awareness. And my other last input, um, I think somebody briefly went through like a potential neighborhood walk or like some kind of like neighborhood watch in our neighborhood. Um, I understand, I spoke to Ian Ross about this earlier and he said that for Ian Ross said that in from Makiki, there were like very active neighborhood watches and like, I'm thinking, so I was wondering perhaps something similar could be catalyzed, you know, if there's enough interest. So I wanted to heavily encourage it because, you know, talking about dilapidation of certain neighborhoods in, in my small tiny bubble, there is like a, this, this strange Kalakapi apartment hotel that, um, Department of Planning, they went through it and they verified, they got the letter that it's infested full of roaches, vermins and, um, pests and that the place was already had like a fire in it and nobody maintained the fire. So, so that place could easily be like a fire hazard again. So that's one indication of, you know, um, just ignoring a thing and the dilapidation. So I wanted to bring this up too. All right. Thank you.
Aloha, Vice Chair, Board Members and Community. My name is Karen Awana and I am the Director of Advancement for Kulia Academy. It's a brand-new public charter school in Kalihii and we opened our doors earlier last month. In part, the reason that I'm here today is because we have students who reside in your Neighborhood Board. Charter schools are allowed to, to accept students from throughout the island. We're not bound by geographic boundaries like regular DOE schools or public, DOE public schools. Kulia Academy is unique in that we are preparing students for higher education and top-paying STEM jobs. We have a comprehensive artificial intelligence and data science curriculum. Our sixth graders are coding programs, flying drones, building self-driving cars, mastering augmented reality and connecting with their community through e-cyber mission. This year, we are at capacity. However, we are currently accepting applications for students entering the sixth and seventh grade for next year. If you're interested in learning more or if you have a child who might be interested or if you know of a family who would benefit from having their child attend our school, you may log on to info@kuliaacademy.org. We also have a few uploads on YouTube if you're interested in finding out more information. Thank you for your time and service to the Makali Moiliili communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Online? Uh, moving on to housekeeping and announcements. Oh, sorry. Yes. Thursday, October third, yes. The next regular meeting of the Makali Moiliili Neighborhood Board, number eight, is scheduled to be held on Thursday, November third, or October third, twenty-twenty-four at six-thirty at the Makali District Park Classroom and online via WebEx. Future agenda items to be, to request an item to be placed on the next meeting agenda, please contact Chair or myself at least two weeks prior to the scheduled meeting, usually the, which is the first Thursday. Olelo Broadcast, the meetings can be viewed on Channel forty-nine at nine PM on the third Friday of the month and the second and fourth Sunday of the month at three PM. For a meeting video archive, go to the link. Bulky item pickup by appointment only. To schedule an appointment, go to honolulu.gov/opalA or call eight oh eight seven six eight three two zero zero. And reporting neighborhood issues, go to honolulu.gov/csd/concern or the Honolulu three-one-one app. And we are adjourned at nine oh nine. Thank you.